We'll go ahead and call to order the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Work Session. For the record, it is Thursday, July 27, 2023, at 6:30 PM, and we are in the Assembly Chambers. First item on the agenda is Citizens Comments, and please feel free to come forward and sign in, turn the microphone on, and you are limited to three minutes per speaker. The local number for call-in is 907-486-3231, and the toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Coral Chernoff, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you tonight. I spoke with you earlier this year, I think around February, about an issue I was having with Alaska Waste. And before I proceed, I'll just give you this background. My son bought a building. It's been owner-financed, so the still, her name is on the borough rolls, and I manage the building because he fishes to pay for his building. So, long story short, we've been in this dispute for three years now, I think as of June. Our claims in this dispute is that, one, we're being overcharged, they're not following the contract fees and schedules. Two, Alaska Waste has not responded to address the issues that we brought forth to them. Three, I have tried several times, last year I met with the acting borough manager, and nothing got resolved, and then around June, I started, we've had two meetings with all the owners, the current owner and the previous owner, and myself, two meetings to talk about this issue. Now, recently, July 17, I received an email from the borough manager that informed me that Alaska Waste has put our account solely in another person's name, and the manager, which was the previous owner, and the manager will no longer speak to us about the account. So here I am. Alaska Waste has also, in May, involved the previous owner by filing a $9,614 small claims against her. She has not previously been involved in this bill that we claim is ours. We would love to pay the bill. We've paid about two years of the bill. We have not paid the bill since last April because they have charging us, overcharging us every month, and we can't resolve it with them. So I've spent a lot of time on this account, and now we're in court, and I am looking to the borough to uphold this contract-
Go ahead and sum up if you would.
-to uphold this contract that you have and resolve this with Alaska Waste. Alaska Waste has failed to fulfill their obligation with their contract on many counts, many, many counts, and I wish I had time to list those for you. But I don't know where to go from here. I understand, as of today, I could perhaps file a formal complaint, there might be a formal complaint form, so if someone could let me know, I would really love to resolve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Coral. Anyone else wishing to come forward, please do at this time, or call in.
Hi there, I am Seema, and I am your assessor. Assessing wants to remind our neighbors in SD1 that we are in your area for updating, measuring, and inspecting this summer. Recently, staff sent out postcards to properties in the SD1 area, and my goodness, we have received amazingly wonderful feedback from owners. Staff just wants everyone to know that we appreciate your smiles and willingness to work with us. We've done like a 180-degree turn, and would like to, in public, thank Manager Williams for the suggestion of the postcards. This will be an additional way that Assessing will now begin updating and notifying people for the future. Thank you.
Scott.
On Facebook, people were concerned that there may be an impending ban on wood stoves, and I suspect that that came from the query about whether you had a wood stove or a fireplace. And I understand that in Fairbanks, they regulate them to have catalytic converters because of inversions in the atmosphere there. I think if we have some explanation of why we're asking those questions, it'll quill, quell some of the anger and hostility on Facebook.
So I looked at that post also, and in there, the lady that did the post actually said that she went to the Fairbanks one, and that's where she got her information on the ban. It was not because of our postcards, but we'll definitely, that's something that we can definitely work with. It was just a prototype that went out, and just the feedback from us has been wonderful.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Seema, I'm your interim community development director. The Planning and Zoning Commission will be, begin reviewing KIBC Code 17160, accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, at their work sessions and regular meetings beginning August 9. The Planning and Zoning Commission meets every second and third Wednesday of each month at 6:30 PM in the Assembly Chambers. The changers, oh, sorry, the changes that the commission is considering could impact all neighborhoods and in all zone districts. CDD staff wants to make sure the public is aware of these changes, and is asking for public input during commission meetings. Your voice matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Seema. Okay, next is agenda items. First is discussion of the potential approval of Contract Number FY 2024-8, Professional Services Agreement with Water Technology Incorporated, for the Kodiak High School Pool Statement of Work and Proposal Package Preparation Based on the Prepared Evaluation. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our interim community affairs director, Mr. Conrad, is here tonight to speak to this.
Good evening, and thank you. We are, I am here, basically because I want to know a direction from the Assembly where to go with this. We have all been, I think we're all well-versed in what is going on with the pool. We opted to have this consultant come up here. I am not a pool expert, I don't want to be one. The question is, is do we want to look at the investment of the $81,000 for this company to help us develop a statement of work during the, do the support during the contract itself for questions from the potential contractors during the bid, as well as any analysis of any recognized change orders? This is a significant potential cost of upwards of, you know, $500,000, $600,000. This is not a couple of bucks. And then my ultimate question is, if indeed you want to fund this, we need to discuss where it would be funded from. I don't have, I have some suggestions, but quite frankly, I'm not sure those are mine to give. So the first question I would ask of the Assembly is, do we feel comfortable enough with this firm that specializes in pools and has done multiple pools in the state of Alaska to hire as our professional representative to assist with the preparation of a proposal package to put out on the street for a professional repair of the pool?
I was impressed with the statement from the company, especially the cost that they're talking about. I thought it was going to be a whole lot more than that, and I think $81,000 to get them here and make sure everything's going well is a good idea.
Larry?
Excuse me, Larry.
Just a question, we have a saline pool, is that correct?
That is correct.
When they do the evaluation of the current condition of the pool, do they sort of give us some idea of what we need to look, look at, five years, 10 years, 20 years, you know, down the road with regard to, you know, our challenges related to that?
The pool itself, the, whether it's chlorine or, or whether it's salt generated from sodium hypochlorite, either way, it's, it's a fine system. These systems work all over the place. There is a potential for a little more maintenance on a saline-type situation like this. However, if you look, it doesn't matter if we had a saltwater pool or a chlorine pool, there are components that were installed in this pool that quite frankly should never have been. There should never had been cast pipe in this pool. It should have been some type of plastic, something that was inert to the, to the various chemicals that are being used. The other issues are the way that certain systems within the filtration systems, the pumps, are so compressed together that they fight each other, and you can't get proper readings. We don't have very large rats, there's electricians working on the remodel, so just, so we know that. So, so there's, there's nothing wrong with the technology of the pool. I believe that there is a maintenance and care issue. I think that things were allowed to go too long without a significant amount of money, or a maybe smaller amounts of money being spent on regular maintenance and replacement of items. We could potentially not have been discussing this particular, this iteration of what we're doing.
So, just-
Go ahead.
So as part of this contract, there'll be recommendations for preventive maintenance, things that we can do, I don't want to say better, but, you know, more comprehensive to prevent failures, and does it, does it also include replacing the piping that we're talking about as we, as they develop a contract?
Yes, to all of that. If I'm around and have anything to do with this, there will be an entire PM program, there'll be PMs put into a program that specific items get done at specific times, and that there would also be critical spares for specific items. You go over there now and look in the filter room, and there's epoxy putty over vessels and things of this nature, rather than replacing vessels. I don't personally find that acceptable.
The other, last question I have is, some of the alternates were related to diving board and some of the takeoffs for swimmers and competition. Is that a safety concern, and if it is, shouldn't they be a part of it instead of an alternate in the cost?
I think that all of that could potentially be put on here as adults. There's degradation being seen, but not structurally, more finish on various surfaces. The handrails, for some reason, the stainless steel handrails are resting above the water lines, which kind of make no sense, or the handrail is not resting, and the escutcheon that goes down into the concrete step itself, that is where you're getting corrosion. So there's, it's kind of hit or miss, and it almost seems like some of the degradation that's being shown is more from the component rather than the system of the pool, if that makes sense.
Yep, thank you.
Ryan?
I've got another long-winded, unfortunately, sorry. Okay, so your direct question was, what do we think about the management contract? So I have reviewed the proposed WTI project management contract, and although I appreciate the effort of the report, I do not support the management agreement, a couple reasons. Reviewing of their terms and conditional, I'm sorry, terms and conditions, TNC, additional project-related costs illustrate the need for geotechnical services and reports, topographic and boundary surveys, testing, project-related insurance, legal and safety consultant services, permits, fees, marketing operations and development. I would like to gain some clarity on these additional project-related expenses that are not listed anywhere else in the proposal. So they're excluded specifically from this management agreement, that by exclusion means they need to be included somewhere else if they're recommended from the consultant. Number two, under the terms and condition, risk allocation illustrates liability of WTI to be no more than $25,000 arising out of injuries, claims, losses, damages, also known as failure to perform, yet the contract value is $81,000. I don't agree with that. Number three, terms and condition, governance, this agreement shall be governed by the laws of the state of Wisconsin. Last time I checked, the pool was here in Alaska. Wisconsin is unique because liability insurance in the state can be opted out, self-funded, or the business can join a risk retention purchasing group, all of which will not defend a case in the state of Alaska. TNC, number four, hazardous material, client represents that no hazardous or toxic substances are presently stored or otherwise located on the project site or adjacent thereto. That is untrue. Terms and condition, number five, existing condition, client agrees to fullest extent permitted by law, assuming Wisconsin, because Alaska state law prohibits broad indemnification under Alaska Statute 45.45.900. Finally, in reviewing the limitations of WTI, I found an exclusion that piqued my interest. Under the Consumer Product Safety Act of 2020, the Code of Federal Regulation 16, Part 1450, is the Virginia Graham Baker Pool and Safety Act of 2019, outlines specific regulatory requirements and explicitly stated on page 17 of this packet to have yet to have been investigated or verified. So I took it upon myself, because I'm that guy. After reading the seven pages from the federal register, which I have printed off and I will give to the clerk, I see that we have significantly federal requirements that are not included in this project that need to be considered if we want to stay compliant. Further review of the act provided a direction to a program called Pool Safely, which provides grants between $50,000 and $400,000 with specific criteria for repairs and renovations and regulatory requirements. I've also printed that off and will give to the clerk. A brief review showcased annual awards up to $3.5 million in various locations for projects similar to those presented in your packet. I'm asking for this option of the grant to be explored, maybe as a possibility for the funding of this program. Finally, I believe that some of these smaller items, as you mentioned earlier, have gone on deferred maintenance lists. That got me wanting to know about our user agreements. So I asked the clerks to give me user agreements, and in a user agreement, give me a second, user agreement between the Kodiak Island Borough School District, Kodiak City, and the Kodiak Island Borough dated September 2018 in Section 8, the agreement calls out the district's obligations for the use of the pool, and I'll point to Section 8, Provision B, where it says the school district will provide all major mechanical work, including annual pool overhaul. There are some additional subsequent requirements of the district, as well as the city. I would encourage us to look at the requirements that we have agreed to in this document before we move forward with this $700,000 project. Hopefully that gives you my answer. That's all, thanks.
Dave?
So the act that you have cited has always been followed, and what that act requires is the replacement of the main pool drain, which would be done as a result of whether that would be an annual maintenance or the prerequisite timeframe for replacement of that drain. We can speak to the company on all of your points. This is strictly a discussion about whether we trust this firm to move forward, and they would not be doing the contracting itself. We would be doing the contracting because it is our pool and it's our liability. We have already discussed potential of applying for the grant, but we need to have a project in front of us, and we need to have the paperwork to be able to put this out onto the street. All of those items that you mentioned can be clarified. We can speak to them. I know that the manager doesn't like the fact that there's a 10% clause when you read the fine print, that if the guy goes to Safeway to buy himself a cup of coffee, they make 10% on that cup of coffee. So these are all items that we can have a discussion before we enter into a contract. Never ask to sign a contract, ask to pursue these folks to see if we can get to a contract situation where we can contract with them to develop our statement of work for us.
Ryan?
Just to clarify, your point of concern with the Virginia Baker Pool and Spa Safety Act, I specifically highlighted areas of the ANZI, non-compliance, ANZI 112.19.8, as well as the American Society Mechanical and Safety Engineers standards that are not met. In 2016 or 17, the pool was drained, the, there was some tile repair done, and the drains were replaced. However, some of the other pool operations that are illustrated in the seven-page federal regulation I've highlighted, and I'll give to the clerk, that are areas of significant concern from a health and safety standpoint, specifically with liability to users of the pool. Thank you.
Jeff?
Yeah, thank you. Dave, just looking at the alternatives here in terms of research in other companies, are there other companies that have done business in the state of Alaska that we're familiar with?
No, there are not.
So this is a firm that has done business for other municipalities?
That's correct, and I reached out to like six or seven different companies throughout this process. The two companies that were the respondents was WTI and another firm out of, I believe, the Portland area, that actually performs the contract work that these guys design. So these are the designers, and the other company that finally responded to me that I was speaking with are actually the pool builders. So those were the only two that I, I received anything back from with multiple inquiries.
Follow-up if I could. Go for it, Jeff. You know, Dave, I'm, I'm fine supporting this at, at $81,000 to have somebody come in and actually manage this process for us and, and provide that kind of oversight to it. I do believe that some of the concerns brought up by other Assembly members are, are worth exploring, and making sure we have answers to those, those questions that were raised would be beneficial as well.
Well, the question is, do you have another one? Larry had three. I got three checks if I have. Go for it.
So I will just ask the uncomfortable question. I know you don't want to be a pool expert, but as I read the use agreement that we have, I can't help but wonder if there are not specific people within the city, or the school district, or the borough, or a combination of all three, as it found in paragraph nine of the use agreement, where we have to plan with them that, that we can't all somehow manage this project collectively. I have to, I, I'm going to go out on a limb and say I'd have to say that the city probably knows the most about this, since they are the operators. So can the city help us manage this contract and save $81,000 that can lower the cost of the repair or put towards surplus goods, or surplus variable drive pumps, or whatever you, you are suggesting? Thanks.
I believe the answer to that is no, and I believe the answer is, quite frankly, in front of you. We're sitting here at an $800,000-plus repair, and who's taking care of the pool? I don't care whose fault it is. We're in a condition now where we're degrading, we need to decide if we're going to do something or not. Real simple. Point a finger wherever you want.
Any further discussion? Okay. What's on the agenda for the regular meeting? One thing that, I guess, that, where it does say under the governance, this agreement shall be governed by the laws of the state of Wisconsin. I'm assuming it's just a boilerplate, but they understand that it has to be under the state of Alaska.
I believe that within the package they gave us, it also stated that they would end up having to likely consult with an Alaska engineer, which is why there are certain exclusions here. So I'm not sure that, although they can be a consultant, they are not a contractor within the state of Alaska, or a registered business within the state of Alaska, so.
Okay, any further discussion? And maybe we'll hear about some of the, there are things that Ryan had asked, he said he'd get to, get to you guys, and we'll see if anything comes up for the meeting. With that, we'll move on to the next item, discussing timeline for strategic planning update. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A strategic plan consisting of priorities of the borough is needed to guide the budget project, process, and staff, and make sure that we keep the community informed of the borough's priorities. The last strategic planning meeting was held back in January of 2018. It created a strategic plan that was good for fiscal years 2018 through fiscal year 2023. As you've probably noticed, we have moved into fiscal year '24. I think it's a great idea for us to update the strategic plan. In agenda setting, we started talking about when a good timeframe for this would be. There is no good timeframe. Either we are thinking about elections, we have just had elections, we have new members seated, then we have the holidays, then we have the budget. So what I was hoping is that we could do it sooner than later, and then include even, so in your packet, you'll see the strategic plan. There's a lot of really good information in there. I don't think it has to change significantly, but you'll notice in there that we have milestones and benchmarks where we look at that plan quarterly, which is clearly something we haven't done in the last three years that I've been involved. So I'm looking to kind of engage with that plan again and kind of have a guiding document for myself, for staff, and to have the public chime in on what's important for the borough to be focusing on. So not a lot of work for tonight, just looking at the calendar, when the Assembly might be willing to look at that. We've had people say, oh, I want to do it on a Saturday. I'm not a fan of Saturday meetings for staff, but I would like to get it on a work session where we have some time set specifically aside so that we could talk about that stuff, and have Assembly members thinking in advance about what they'd like to see that document look like.
Amy, one of my thoughts is, three of us are out of town on the 10th, so that doesn't, doesn't work. So which leaves the, the following work session on the 31st, which I think we could have some discussion of kind of what is on there, where we're at with some of the stuff, and kind of then set the tone for where we want to go for that. Is that acceptable to you?
I would actually like Assembly member Ladude to weigh in, because he's our strategic plan guru. I've seen him plan them for the Economic Development Corporation, and I know he has a long history. So I would, if we have expertise in the room, I say we use it. I, like, I have an idea of what I would like, but it does not necessarily reflect what the eight of you would want to see, so I'd be more interested in having it come from the Assembly.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm, I'm bringing this up. It's kind of a kickoff on there to see what, what it states, where we're at, what we've done, what we haven't done, and then decide where we need to go. And Larry, I'll have you chime in here, but that's part of my thought on there. Amy, you want to say something?
I was just going to say, since Jeff and I were elected back in 2020 and went on the Assembly, other than saying we have a strategic plan somewhere, we haven't done anything with it at all in that entire timeframe. So I can tell you now, and we can save some time on the 31st, we don't use this document, and, and it, it's, it's just become irrelevant into how we're doing it. So I just want to know, it seems to be a pretty common thing throughout municipalities, everyone has it on their website, and they refer to it, and they update it, and I think we should too. So I'm just asking for buy-in, that we can go back and look at that, and then when new people are elected, they can confirm that that's the direction they want to go, and it kind of gives them some history of what the Assembly's goals are as they come on as part of like an onboarding. When you come onto the Assembly, you just, you have so many new personalities to try to get to know. to get to know and this kind of puts us all in the same direction at the same time.
Larry, and then Ryan.
Thank you. One of the challenges related to strategic plans is that it becomes so broad that almost everything that you do, you can credit to the strategic plan. It's creep. So by the time you look at one, there is so much there that you can't focus on any one thing and show that you've actually focused and taken care of that. This particular strategic plan is very, very broad and it's so broad that we could make an argument that we've been working diligently on it because everything that we've done, we can attribute to one of the goals. But if we really want to accomplish something, then we need to really focus on what we want to accomplish and really work on that instead of being so broad that we do a little bit on everything and really go nowhere. And I think that's why the public becomes very disillusioned with plans because they really don't do anything. They're form over substance. But on the other hand, they're very, very important for grants. They're very, very important if they're solid in communication and I think that we can tune it up effectively if we really sit down and lay out our priorities and we really be careful not to try to include everything in it because it won't work. It's a really great process when we sit down. One of the questions I have though is how do we involve the public in a strategic plan? How do we collect data from the public and turn it into useful information that will guide some of the priorities of what is the community thinking? And I think that would be very important too. We all represent, you know, we're all elected by the public, but it'd be nice to have some way to collect data from them as part of the process. It would be a great process to go through.
Thank you. Ryan?
Yeah, this document is conveniently located underneath all of our pictures on the website, a nice little hyperlink in case you haven't seen it. I agree with Amy's synopsis on this that we probably haven't been as diligent as we should have been with this. However, I don't really see this as a strategic plan. I actually think that this fails the variables of a strategic plan. I see this as brand management and if you want to involve the public, you need to involve them in the brand management aspect of who we are as a community and who we are as a borough. There's a couple of things that are in this strategic plan that we simply have failed at as an organization and I think that they need to be prioritized. You, Mayor, aren't you had asked earlier about some ideas for this? We need to decide, in my opinion, if those five fundamentals of this strategic plan are still the five fundamentals or the direction that we want to go and we as assembly members should be researching those and coming up with our own list, a list of 10 or 12, and prioritize four. Everybody vote after going through the nonprofit issues with everybody. This is going to take us six years to solve and so that this is quite the challenge. So I think that the plan to try and get this updated needs to be very carefully executed so that we do not waste time, in my opinion. Thanks.
Joe?
For eight years, I was the tribal transportation coordinator in Yezinkey. One of the rules I had to follow was every three years, we had to come up with a long-range transportation plan. And what we did was we would have a community meeting and have the community give us their priorities and that's how we would decide on what we would work on in the coming three years. I think perhaps if we, the question was asked, how do we get the public involved? Perhaps that's one way of doing it, whether you advertise and have flyers sent out or whatever. We have a meeting where they're, they come in and tell us what they would like us to do or like us to see us do. That might work, but that's just my, an idea.
Just a couple of comments. I agree sooner rather than later, for sure. Yeah. I hear the concerns about doing like a Saturday strategic planning session. I agree with the manager also, but I think if we want public input, we need at least some kind of Saturday listening session to engage the public just on this one particular item. I would be okay with that. Strategic plans, yeah, are only as good as the follow-through in nonprofit strategic planning. We recommend that you put your strategic plan on every single monthly agenda so that you are, and you're not looking at the entire plan, but you're just looking at this month, we're looking at strategy number one. Next month or next quarter, we're just going to look and evaluate like what the mayor was saying, what have we done? Where are we going? What more would we like to do? So if that's something that we want to follow up on, then I would recommend maybe doing something like that, just putting it on the agenda once a month or once a quarter. I appreciate Larry's comments about the strategic plan being too broad and I agree with his assessment of the assembly's strategic plan. I'm going to kind of differ on my conclusions though. I think it's okay for a borough strategic plan to be broad. When you're writing grants, you are writing grants to match your values with the grantor's values and objectives. And so I think it's okay if a borough strategic plan's a little more abstract and value-based than, and more like about direction. I would encourage, you know, if we were wanting specific goal-oriented deliverables and dates and timelines and things like that, I would encourage department-level strategic plans that have those specific benchmarks in their plans. So I'm fine with a broad and abstract strategic plan at our level at least. But it all comes down to who's going to lead the process itself. If we bring somebody else in to kind of run this for us, I think that'll make the process a little bit easier, a little more streamlined instead of having seven people with seven different ideas of just what the process itself should be. So if we find somebody or if, I don't know if Amy wants to lead it, whoever it is that lead it, walk us through and keep us on track. And you can do, you can do a strategic planning session in three hours if you have a good leader to lead that process.
Just one comment. I certainly agree with Jared's comments. But mostly I think a strategic plan has to be specific enough to give the manager and her staff direction. You know, when I've been serving the board before, I wanted to know what their priorities were so that I could focus on them and use the resources available to try to achieve those goals. And it's very difficult for any kind of manager or a leader to lead if they don't know where the board wants them to go or what their priorities are. So a strategic plan should be broad enough to communicate, as you said, you know, our values and what's important, but should provide some specificity for the manager and staff to sink their teeth in so that they can do their job and know that we're going in a direction that the board wants them to go.
Ryan?
I'd like to see some sort of a polypool or web submission hit our website so that the community can submit opinions and ideas on this far in advance before we start going into meeting sessions because although I've listened to my fellow assembly members talk about their goals and their ambitions, we work for the public and I want the input of the public. And if we get 35 responses that says do ABC and 12 responses that say DEF, we should prioritize ABC because those are the, we work for our constituents. And so I would like to see some sort of online, maybe IP address specific answer or a polling system so one person from the same IP can't put in 35 entries. So get IT involved. I know that that's possible. I was just reading a survey result with the Alaska Marine Highway. They did the exact same thing on satisfaction and ideas and inputs and so I know that the technology is out there. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to? All right. So first thing to me is to discuss this again the end of August, on August 31st work session. Is anybody opposed to that? I'm not saying we're having the public meeting at that time. It just, I think we should start, you know, where we come from, what happened on it and how we want to move forward. I don't care for the Saturday things either. Winter time, I don't mind so much, but during the summer, hell no. Oh, I just did. So any further discussion? We'll move on then. August 31st work session on there. Next item is discuss requests from the U.S. Coast Guard for a letter of entry for an installation of a memorial rock and bench. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your packet, you're going to see information that is the background of this project. It's actually already out there installed. You can see it in the pictures. The reason the Coast Guard wanted a municipality to engage in that letter of entry is because it would waive the $400 application fee and $250 a year fee, but it's been out there for quite some time. So in your packet, you see a letter from the Department of Natural Resources to the Coast Guard here in Kodiak and it's for something that should have started years ago and already expires on April of 2025. So what I'm asking is if it is in the borough's interest to pursue that to get a new letter of entry that would be in with a Kodiak Island borough and the Department of Natural Resources instead of, like we can't sign this particular letter because this is between the Coast Guard and them. So looking to see if that's something that we would be interested in doing. I've spoke with the new commanding officer of the air station and they're still willing to go out and make sure that site is maintained. I believe, Lena, you're going to have to verify, there's a lawyer opinion on this and whether or not we should do it. So hopefully you have that up there. I did not look. It should be on pink paper. I wanted Scott Brent Erickson's opinion on, it's here somewhere. We'll get that for you on what his thoughts were on taking on that responsibility because all responsibility comes with some sort of risk, so I wanted him to weigh in on that. And then if it's something that the assembly is willing to do, then we can contact the Department of Natural Resources and get a letter put in our name instead of the Coast Guards.
Thank you, Amy. So basically, it's not a problem until after April 30th, 2025?
No, the Coast Guard is a delinquent in signing the letter and they asked their, the Coast Guard legal if it was okay to sign it. But Coast Guard legal comes out of Washington DC and they don't want to sign an agreement for in some remote spot on a remote island off the coast of Alaska.
So they never signed it?
No, it's never been signed. So as Captain Coulter was leaving Air Station Kodiak, this was in his pile of to-do items and it ended up with the borough. And so it is sitting with us and so I did not want to expend staff time on something until I knew that it was something that we would be willing to do it or not.
Ryan, you had your hand up?
Yes, so I haven't read this yet. However, the way that I read the entire application, both from the Coast Guard and the letter from the Department of Natural Resources, as well as some additional research into DNR with the state of Alaska, it appears to me that the state of Alaska reserves the right to backcharge for all non-paid fees and the grantee may also be charged for actual expenses of any inspections. So I'm wondering what the financial liability of this is and maybe the answer's in that packet. The second thing is, is that there is a requirement for site maintenance and then there is a definition of what site maintenance may actually look like, including dog litter and things of that nature. So I'm really curious to what, if we become the grantee, what I don't want to do is that this become a Kodiak Island Borough facilities project, in my opinion. So, thanks.
Amy?
I think everything that you said is very fair. If we become the grantee, we will not accept any back pay. It would be us stepping in and partnering with the Coast Guard. And then if we needed to, we could do a memorandum of understanding or agreement with the Coast Guard that they would do the site maintenance and the new captain out there ironically is Captain Williams. And so I don't think we'd have any problem with getting them to agree to do that. This is something that was very important to them and was a really big deal when it went in and unfortunate, and they thought it was just going to be a slam dunk with Coast Guard legal and it turned out not to be. So if we have points of contact in DNR and so I would reach out to them and just make sure that that financial liability did not fall on the borough and that the Coast Guard was agreeing to go in and make sure that the site was taken care of. And then the other option is we just don't engage in this and then the Coast Guard can figure out a way on their own. But they did ask us for help and so that's why it's in front of you tonight.
I personally like the idea of working with the Coast Guard on this. As long as, you know, it's something that they started. The advantage of us being part of it is the fees end. And so as long as they're willing to do the maintenance, I think we can possibly make that work. But I would say proceed, but you've got those questions, Ryan? You had?
Yeah, I don't want you to take my questions as not support. I actually think that this is a great idea. I just want to make sure that fiscal liability is identified in the very beginning and we can cover fiscal liability in an MOU and make sure that that gets solidified so that it's not an assumed liability. Then I'm 100% on board for this. I think it's a great cause. Thanks.
Further discussion? Joe?
I think that would be good as well, as long as we're not left on a hook. One of the questions that I have is what if somebody falls off the cliff? What happens then? How are we going to be, are we going to be affected by that? Will we be responsible? So I think there's a few more questions that need to be answered before I say yes, although it is a good idea, but there are still some questions.
Jeff?
Yeah, I think at first glance, as I was reviewing this, I was supportive of it. After looking at Scott Brent Erickson's
Legal opinion?
Opinion, I think the last couple of sentences are worth everyone reading because that would be the biggest question I would have. And I think that until I feel more comfortable or confident in that, I wouldn't support this, even though I'd like to support it.
Thank you. Further discussion? Jared?
I'm with Jeff too. I've been up there a few times and sat on that bench and watched some rocket launches and it's not, it's not easy to get to, but you can certainly get to it. But it is, it is a bluff. It is very close to a cliff and if you're tracking a rocket launch with your binoculars, you could very easily step off. So I'd like some more, I don't know, think some more about the liability there and where, it's a memorial on public land, so what is like, what is the radius around that memorial that, which would be our liability on the map? It's a pretty big area, so, but that's just the Latin long, right? So you can see in that picture on the last page, nice family in front of the memorial there. It's a beautiful bench and the view is spectacular. But then you see the guy way over there. way over there. So who is?
By the edge?
Yeah, by the edge. So is, if that guy falls off, is, you know, are we liable? How far, you know, how far away from that memorial? What's, so I think there's some little tiny details around that. But in spirit, I, I support this. Because it's, yeah, it's, it's a great spot. It's a great memorial.
Any further discussion? Amy, I think that basically some questions have been asked. Need to try and get some more information. You agree? Okay, thank you. Next item is a packet review. This is amending Kodiak Island Borough Code Title I, General Provisions, Chapter 1.20, General Penalty Section 1.20.050, fine schedule setting, out penalties in the minor offense fine schedule, and amending Title VIII Health and Safety, Chapter 8.20, littering, Section 8.20.010, unlawful acts regarding littering and improper disposal of waste. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have SEMA here tonight as our interim community development director to go over this. I know we've seen a lot of different iterations of it, so it's exciting to see it finally come to public hearing.
I think the most exciting thing is that Assemblyman Smith is here, and he's worked really hard with us to get this going. So I'm super happy that you're here. This is the third time you've seen this before you. This ordinance will update the penalties to the fine schedule for matters concerning zoning compliant recreational vehicles as permanent living quarters and littering, and amends Title VIII definitions for littering and improper disposal of waste.
Any questions of staff? Discussion, any? Okay, guess it moves forward to the regular meeting. Thank you. Next item is contracts. Contract number FY 2022-40A, amending contract number FY 2022-40, Borough Clerk Employment Agreement. Clerk isn't here right now. Scott is deputy. Do you wish to say anything?
No.
Okay, so this will be on the agenda to ratify. There's only just a few minor changes on there. Probably because it is appointment contract, it'll probably be in the executive session at the next meeting. Then we'll go over that. Next item is contract number FY 2023-41, property assessment taxation software to Tyler Technology Incorporated. Staff report. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our finance director, Dora Cross, is here to talk about this very exciting software that staff has literally been working on for years to get to this point. So, Dora?
Thank you. Yes, if I could jump up and down on my foot, I would jump up and down and be so excited that this is finally coming to, to a point where we have a contract. This is, the program we're working with was here when I got here. It's version 8.5. It was a transition version. It was never meant to be a permanent version, and here we are, 10-plus years later, still with it. We're the only people this company has on this version. It's been sold twice in the last 10 years. So it's not even the original company that we're dealing with. They don't even have staff that support this company or this program version any longer. They do their best when we call, but there's no security fixes or anything. We have a, a group of, of people. SEMA was a part of it, the assessing department, IT department was also a part of it, Paul and Mitchell. We met, we've been meeting since probably September of last year to put together an RFP. The RFP went out in February. We thought we were going to have two respondents. We only had one. I did talk to someone in the other company we thought was going to respond. They don't want to pursue software development in Alaska any longer. So they're, they did not respond. Tyler, as you can see, they already have contracts with municipality of Anchorage. They're in the process of implementation in Ketchikan, and Matsu Borough just signed a contract with them. So those are other Alaska municipalities that are using this software. The total cost for three years is $998,000. We will be paying dual license fees to both companies during implementation, which is expected to last 17 months. We were, our F, RFP went out for, we want the world to see what we would get back. We very carefully decided which version, which options we wanted, being conscious of our staffing and how limited our staffing is for implementation. So we were careful in what we chose to install. There are other things in the future we might like to, to include. There's a field mobile app that assessing could potentially use. But right now, just getting the basic program up and running and installed is important to not only the workings of our staff, but the borough as a whole. This is the backbone of our assessment software, our assessment determinations, our tax collection bills, and our ability to track and process payments. So it's an important piece of software for the borough. Did you want to add anything, SEMA?
No.
Is there any questions? Take a breath now.
Ryan, and then Jeff?
My question is directly related to the payment processing. So what, or has, has there been analysis put forth into the payment processing scheme of processing fees, terminal hubs, annual subscriptions, versus who we're going with with Tyler versus who we currently have now? Is there a fee comparison? Are we saving any money by credit card swipes or credit card online entries?
I don't know that I quite understand your question.
Okay, so I'll give you an example. Company A may charge 4% for a credit card transaction fee, 4.25% if it's typed in, 4% if it's swiped. Company B may charge 3% for a swipe and 3.25% for a typed in entry. Has there been any analysis between what we currently have and what Tyler offers?
Yes. And, and what we currently have is about a point and a half to a point, 1.5 to 1.6 percentage points lower than what Tyler's offering.
So that will then decrease the revenues processed by credit card transactions by 1.6%?
No, we have no intention, we have no intention of changing our credit card processor.
Well, Tyler is a credit card processing as well. That's one of the services that they offer. So are we not opting in for them?
No, because it's more expensive for the consumer.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and Jeff?
Thank you. The, you said there's a 17-month implementation period in which time we'd be paying both vendors. During that second year, will we get a credit back for a half a year?
Whenever we stop using the other program, that's when they'll stop billing us at the end of the quarter. But during, so that we'll be running dual systems for a time until we make sure that the data agrees with both of them.
So then, follow up if I could, then in FY 25, that $211,275, could, we could see a reduction in that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Depending on how quickly the implementation goes, yeah.
Thank you.
So, Dora, question, a couple of questions here is, it looks like basically from the capital costs, it's $572,500 there, which we have money in the, in the capital fund for. Then I'm looking at the first year, basically fiscal year 2024, we've budgeted this $211,275, correct?
Correct.
So basically, we have it covered?
Correct.
With no additional
Correct.
Money needing to be appropriated at this time?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to get
Other than, you know, in FY 20
Out there for the public.
Other than in FY 25, you know, we're expecting another 211, but
Right, and 26, but that's the licensing fees that are going to be, they'll go down in 26 to 141,000 then.
Correct.
Plus, the, the original vendor may be off sooner. So we, but that's what we're planning on budgeting for next year fiscal year on license fees is the 211
Yes.
275. The $27,500, which says data cleanup slash conversion assistance, when is that?
That's if we need it.
Okay.
Along the way, if, if, if they get into the mapping and system analysis, and we have a, say, a field that has a combined value, and the new program has them as separate values, they will not convert that column or field into two values. They have to have it incoming as two values. So we made contract with our current software vendor to help us modify that field into the, into the mapping that the new company will use. So there's just, there's a little bit of money there to help with that. But again, that's, that's already set aside in that project. And if we don't use that, all of that project money, we'll just, we'll just do a budget amendment to transfer it back to the general fund.
Scott?
Is Tyler going to send some people up for the initial investiture of the system?
They could, yeah, with, with as much. Their system is cloud-based, so pretty much, they have, they have their own. They don't, I mean, it's not like they have to come here to attend to the servers or any of the data that's here. They're hosting it on their cloud. So pretty much it's just a data transfer. They may come up here to understand how our systems work, to help us formulate the screens and which fields that we need for our data entry. But
I, I think that's something you really need to talk about, talk to Tyler about. I suspect you're going to want to bring him in.
You'll see in there that they do have travel agreements lined out, just in case.
Larry?
Just a quick question. Although you're very happy about this transition, these kinds of things are really personnel-intensive and stressful, although happy. Do you have sufficient personnel to manage this as you move forward?
Maybe, maybe not. That's why we were very careful to choose specific options and not get everything that we wanted. We do have at least one retired employee who is willing to contract to come back and help us with this if necessary. So we, there are a few helpful options we can, we can tap. But we, we talked about that a lot during, during these meetings. But I don't know that we have a choice anymore.
So if down the road you find that you need increased staffing, it won't be a surprise to the Assembly?
Shouldn't, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Project-oriented.
Correct.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff? Thank you, Dora. Then we have contract number FY 2024-7, approval of landfill fire alarm and sprinkler deficiency repairs and replacement by Taylor Fire Protection. Amy, manager?
Thank you. Mr. Conrad is here to explain this one.
So every year, we perform inspections at our facilities. And this year, we have been having some small issues with various things. This year, we asked Taylor Fire Protection to actually take a hard look. To the best of my knowledge, the only repairs that have been made to the sprinkler system at the baler, since I've been in here for 14 years, has been we've replaced, replaced an air, air compressor. The dry heads are over the 10-year limit. All of those need to be replaced. And they've identified a, they've identified a tamper device that is not functional. We need to have these systems functional, especially at the baler. I, I have been there when the baler itself had a fire. And it's very quick and very fast, and there's a lot of fine dust in this facility a lot of time. And the last thing that the Kodiak Island Borough needs, quite frankly, is a landfill fire. There is a mistake, I would like to point out in the third paragraph. There is no coverage. It should not be overage. So consequently, they're also, we're also looking at replacing pipe. The $10,000 that is a part of this, above the 19, is a T and M. So whatever pipe is found to be replaced will come out of that $10,000. We believe that that will cover the cost. And also install the new dry heads under the area of the overhead door that have never been present or required by code.
So basically, we're looking at a contract which will end up approving it not to exceed $29,569? Is that what I'm hearing?
At this point, that is correct.
Thank you. James?
So this retrofit is basically going to change the control box as well, correct?
It will upgrade.
Okay, may I?
Continue.
I have a few questions.
Yeah, just continue, James.
And then a statement. So does this have the call-out service once you change the box, or does it have it now?
It, it is not reportable at this point. We can have the call-out service. That would be an added charge. That's also an added annual charge to the contract that we have for the facilities that do report.
Okay, so I'm not talking about calling the fire station. What I'm talking about is the service contract on the box that will call you whenever the alarm system is.
That's what I'm talking about as well.
So the new box requires it, no matter what, unless you guys are getting a different box than what they've offered in the last two years?
I don't have that answer, but I'm going to assume yes.
It, it does.
Okay.
The new style has to have a monitoring system. So you're going to pay that. It says it's an option. It's not an option. It automatically starts as soon as you install it. Make sure that it is on the exterior of a building and not surrounded by metal. Because it is a cell signal that goes to that. It does not, it cannot be used as a landline. It has to be a cell signal. The reason why I know this is I just had one of these installed by Taylor, by Taylor Fire, and they promised me that it would work.
Does it work?
I've had 27 calls from the call center over the last 10 days, and most of them are at night when I'm trying to sleep. So I'm a little frustrated with Taylor right now because they said they would not do anything about it. Not only that, they said if I wanted to do anything about it, they were going to charge me another $4,700 to come out here and fix it.
Ooh, I can see that frustration. Dave?
I can let you know when they're coming to do this. Sorry.
So I ripped it off the wall this morning and then had, and then had another electrical company come in and reinstall it in a different spot. And so the monitoring system, I am telling you right now, make sure you do not get it in this service. Make sure that the system is not going to be mandated by this new box if we do decide to go with it. And if it is mandated, make sure that Taylor comes in here and fixes the problem because they won't do it for me. And I'm
We get the point. I, I think the point is well taken.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it. I'm sure Dave does too. But it's more that they'll have to look into. Ryan?
Yeah, I'll agree with Mr. Conrad here. The last thing that we need is a landfill fire. This is a life safety issue for me. This is an automatic yes. I hope that Mr. Turner's comments helped pave the road to a smooth transaction. But if we're not in compliance for our fire sprinkler system, we need to get there.
Dave?
So, I'm not trying to make up for anything here. Typically, we have our electrician at the site the same time we have the fire folks, and I believe we're talking about the same vendors.
Yes. Any further questions of staff on this? Any further questions, the staff, on this? Thank you. Next item, ordinance for introduction. It's ordinance number FY twenty-two-four dash five of the Assembly of the Kodiak Island Borough adopting proposed changes to the Kodiak Island Borough salary schedule. Is this a placeholder at this point, Amy?
No. This is a, well, I would love to say right now, yay, the union contract was signed, but that would be a lie. Um, what it is, is that the Borough Assembly has approved a two-point-five percent raise for the staff and I would like to see the non-union employees go ahead and get that because it has to be introduced by ordinance. It has to go through two regular meetings, so I'm hoping that I will be able to change this ordinance and add the union stuff in there so that it all passes at the same time. But right now, I don't have consensus with the union. Um, I do have a meeting with the union on August third with our federal mediator again and with the union rep and so I just don't know how that's going to go. I can't promise that. I'm hoping because the vote was so close that we'll be, it won't take too much longer to have that passed and so the hope is to change the part that says that there is no change on the, the union side for the collective bargaining agreement and update that with it affecting both parties. But because the Assembly in the past has realized that it is important to get money into people's pockets when they are hurting, I don't want to hold the non-union employees back at this point because of whatever reasons are holding the union contract back. So, this is just a way to get the non-union employees their money on a predictable schedule. I thought that everyone would have it tomorrow morning in their paycheck, but it is, just didn't work out that way, so I don't want any further delay those people that aren't in the union.
Thank you. Any questions, the staff? Jeff.
I'd love to be able to support this. I, I will not be supporting this based on what happened the last time around when we put money in people's pockets and how quickly that was forgotten. So, I'm, I'm going to be a, a no on this one as much as I'd like to be a yes.
That wasn't the non-union employees that, okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, next item is managers' comments. Amy?
Thank you. I have a, a report that you guys have. I just spoke up to union negotiations that will be on August third. Wanted to remind you and the members of the public that, that there is a reception with Representative Stutes happening at the Fish Tech Building at the Touch Tank Area on August eighth from four-thirty to six-thirty P.M. Representative Stutes is bringing some other members from the state legislature to Kodiak, so it's a good opportunity to see her and some other representatives. Um, we are working on an amendment to the solid waste contract. We have language due to Alaska Waste tomorrow, so we're hoping to clarify some of the terms in there that are problematic for a lot of people. Had a meeting today on the Chinook Highway Project and Dave was there and actually our mayor was there as well just to try to understand what's coming forward from the mile post fifteen to thirty-one rehabilitation project. That is being broken up into three phases, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-eight, and twenty-thirty. So, it's a lot longer than we had originally hoped for, but that project is coming and they're working on their environmental report that's hopefully supposed to be done this year. Lots of updates in engineering and facilities as well. Um, the leachate treatment plant building, that paint has finally decided to stick to this deal and is passing the tests, so we're able to get electric out there, which is exciting. And the North Star windows and siding, uh, doing really good on the windows. Excited to see some more of that siding go up out there. And then you'll see in upcoming contracts that we have that east roof proposal and the skylight proposal for North Star coming with estimates as requested. And then we have, I think, which is really important, and if you're on the Health and Facilities Advisory Board now or you're just interested in that, August seventh through eleventh, we're having a healthcare facility evaluation with onsite, onsite visits here in Kodiak. So, our consultants will be coming in to learn the needs and they have a pretty exciting proposal. The Borough has asked for this to be done, so we're leading some of those projects, but most of the meetings will happen at the hospital or we're going to try to have some off-site stuff, probably in the conference rooms over at KFRC just to try to encourage the non-providence healthcare providers to attend a little bit more. As you heard earlier, the boilers and generators here are moved and the electricians are in and working, getting ready for that project to come in. We talked about the PATS software, which is going to be a big change for finance and assessing. So, as SEMA's had to adjust to some new things with Harris, that's only going to last for two more years and then we'll be learning, uh, new stuff from Tyler. IT is successful in their upgrades. Almost everyone is done here in the building and we've started to reach out to our facilities at KFRC and the landfill to get them updated as well. SEMA has done a good job in letting people know that we are out in Service District One doing fieldwork, so happy to hear that those postcards are working and people are actually coming out inside saying, oh, yeah, I know why you're here. I have the postcard. So, that is working out well. And we have, we're less than a month away now from, uh, our new community development director getting here, so excited about that. And then at the end of the report, there are two things. One is the handout. There is a public meeting tonight that went from five to seven at KFRC on the Kodiak-Chinook Highway Project that, so you have the handout that we got today in that meeting just so you can see where the different phases are. Their hope is to combine two of the phases in one year and get the project done in three phases, but they're not sure what that looks like yet. Um, as they are looking at replacing culverts, the culverts are getting so big, they're looking at having to actually do bridge replacements in several sections. And then they talked about that huge curve that's at mile twenty-five. You can see the little bump out on that tiny little map. They're looking at actually straightening that out due to crash data and data that they have from that corner. The final thing from me tonight is just a copy of a letter that I got from the city management office. We met with them again today on their lease, which I just, I feel like it shouldn't be this difficult. We haven't had a lease with the city since twenty-twenty and in the letter, you can see a list of things they're interested in us completing before they'll sign a lease. I will not put those items in a lease because that's not the items that go into a lease and there's a portion of the lease that says, you know, this lease constitutes the whole agreement and it's very, um, as we review leases here at the Borough, I'm trying to use the same template from lease to lease, so we have leases that all look the same as we move forward and it's time for renewal so people in the future don't go back and be like, why is this lease from nineteen ninety-seven? You know, so we're just, we're trying to standardize all of that. We have a list, I don't want to call it a list of demands, but it is a list of, a lengthy list of requests. And in our meeting yesterday, I was asked, does the Assembly know? So, I wanted to be able to say, yes, the Assembly does know. And so, what happened last time, the last time our lease was done with the city is we had these same kind of issues. It was with manager powers. Eventually, manager powers just gave up and raised the rent by ten percent and said, you have forty-five days to comply or get out. And then we went on. Um, and then when it came time for the twenty-twenty lease, I've seen a version from Mr. Conrad, a version with, uh, Manager Murphy's name on it and now there is a version with my name on it. And it just isn't getting signed, so we're kind of at that point where we're probably just going to, uh, give them a rent rate and move on. They have requested to increase their space with, if you're familiar with the layout downstairs, the fishbowl area, it's three-hundred-and-fifty-seven square feet. Their clerk's office would like to move into there and I'd like to be able to give that to them because outside of when the auditors are here, we're not using that space except for storage, so it would be great to be able to give that to them. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
The auditors are in the fishbowl right now, so we're.
They are right there. Yep, the city, um, let them in there earlier this week so that they'd have a space because the city is in their audit process right now.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ryan? I didn't, did you? Okay, sure.
Just a follow-up to the previous item, if I may. Where does the non-bargaining unit salary schedule live?
New ordinance.
I, I think it's listed in the ordinance, isn't it?
That's the only place it lives?
I think so.
Well, it gets updated in the, in the personnel manual.
Okay.
I would have to, I would have to refer to Dora for that. I've had it printed out a lot as we're looking and so I just have the individual sheets in my office.
So, the, the, you're asking about the bargaining unit or the non-bargaining?
Non-bargaining.
Non-bargaining is simply in the ordinance. The bargaining is in the bargaining agreement, but we also need to have the bargaining in the ordinance as well because the personnel manual references the schedule in the ordinance.
Okay, that's the clarity I needed. Thank you.
Yeah, we actually contacted Scott Brad Erickson on how to best word that ordinance because it hasn't been done that way every single time that union agreement gets done, so we want to make sure that we were, um, referring to it in the correct manner.
Thank you.
Ryan.
Um, I want to go back to the discussion that we were just having with the city offices. While I was researching the pool, um, project that we earlier discussed, um, I, I came across there, I gained these agreements and I just want to make sure that I read this publicly. The purpose of the agreement is intended to enhance and not interfere with the primary mission of the Borough, City, and District Governance. I believe that that right there is, is a very solid statement that as we go through leases with, um, our customer with the city or leases with the school district, that that statement stand broad and tall. And if there, I, I have an, I have an old assembly packet, so I haven't read the letter yet. So, if there are concessions that need to be made for the city, who is a key partner in the community of Kodiak, we should take heedance to that because this is, um, it, it is who we are as a community. So, I guess that's, we'll just end it with that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sheridan, it is the last page of the manager's report, which I hope you have. And it's a, it's a listing of stuff that I would like to have for all sides of the building and everywhere in the building. I just don't know how we would fund it.
Thank you. Any further questions of the, the manager? Move on to Cork's comments.
So, um, I have attached the Borough Clerk's Report in your packet. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I did add on here a couple of things aside from what Nova had previously recorded. I did assist, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission with clerking their meeting. Bronwyn was out sick. It was, um, interesting. I did my homework previous, before I attended the meeting, which was definitely well-done and I, you know, I had really good help from SEMA in regards to that, uh, catching me up. So, that was very helpful. Definitely was, uh, different from an assembly meeting, but, um, I was happy to help. And then, uh, I was asked by, um, Brian if I could administer the oath of office for the fire chief, Mr. Scott Ellis. So, I did, uh, attend the fire meeting on Monday just briefly at the beginning and, uh, did have him sign his oath, uh, which was a new experience for me, so I was very honored to do so and I, uh, Mr. Ellis is a incredibly nice, nice guy, so, uh, I have any, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Seeing none, move on to Assembly member comments. I'll start with James, please.
No further comments.
Joe?
I have no comment.
Jared?
None for me.
Jeff?
Nothing further.
Larry?
Mostly a question. Lately, I've seen a new application by aerospace corporation to expand their use of the land and I was wondering if it might be good to have an officer of that corporation, um, attend a assembly meeting and review what they mean by cutting off access, if that's just during launches or if that's all the time, just to get an idea of what this new application and expansion of their footprint at Pesigak would mean, if that would be possible.
Okay.
Is that the one that was turned down by the state? This was three or four months ago.
New one.
New one, yeah.
Okay. Larry, anything else? That's it. Scott?
No comments.
Ryan?
Well, I'll make up for everybody else's no comment. Uh, I've got a bunch of them. So, when we start looking at strategic planning, I want to emphasize that we should look at strategic planning, that we are no longer getting ourselves backed into a corner or no choices anymore. I think that that is one metric of success because as we heard tonight, we're backed into a corner with two projects in front of us that we discussed and that doesn't sit very well with me. Another comment is, uh, I would encourage us to, uh, look at the non-union compensation and try and get that moved along as well. I agree with Manager Williams and my statement is never mess with people's pay and compensation. In reviewing agreements, MOUs and MOAs, uh, I want to, I, I want to go on, I'm going on a mission and I'd like to review all the MOAs, MOUs and agreements that we have with facilities and I want to make sure that we're following the intent of our contracts and taking care of those that we're doing business with. I don't feel in the, in the two agreements that I reviewed to, um, in my course of research that we are meeting that. Uh, next, I'd like to thank, uh, the community, uh, for an amazing turnout at the Daniel Harmon National Guard Armory Memorialization tonight. I think that that was a very good turnout and I appreciate that. Uh, next, uh, I do hope that we can get to a resolve with Coast Guard about CG fourteen thirty-five memorial. This is in remembrance of five Coast Guardsmen who perished in nineteen eighty-six, if you guys don't know the backstory. And finally, in, uh, the letter that I quickly perused from the city of Kodiak, um, in Mr. Twenge's closing statements relative to the current security access in place at the front door, we request the Borough relax the sign-in requirements and return to pre-pandemic practices to create a more welcoming visitor experience and to increase transparency and accessibility to municipal government. I could not agree more and I would really encourage us to, uh, have that discussion and figure out what we need to do to, to get to that level. Outside of that, I guess, uh, my long-winded comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor's comments. Couple of things that got back, um, yesterday, um, from the NACO meeting in Austin, Texas and other than it just being way too damn hot there, um, it was very informative. I now know I can't stand the heat and that's why I don't, I violated my own rule of not leaving Alaska in the summertime and paid dearly for it. Alaska was, ended up only, which I was glad, I was afraid I was going to be the only one there from Alaska. The mayor of Ketchikan was also there on there, so Alaska had two votes instead of one. And then there was meetings with the Western Region, which is the Western States on there and in that, uh, Alaska had one vote and, uh, Mayor Rodney Dial, myself, both agreed on the candidate there, so that went well. It was interesting talking with, with him, you know, getting a perspective on a similar-sized community and that, so I'll fill you in on some of that later. Also, um, you know, I heard, uh, today that, uh, Representative Stutes's tour that she's done before bringing representatives and, and sometimes I think it includes senators to Kodiak, uh, and she's doing that again on that, uh, what amounts to the second weekend in August and the reception that was announced that we should go to. Three of us are going to be out of town, but I strongly recommend that the rest of you try and go to represent Kodiak there just to meet those representatives that have taken the time to come to Kodiak. Uh, one of the things I also found out in a couple of other meetings, um, today is, one is that she will be, they are taking a tour, she'll be taking them on that, tour of the rocket launch facility. Also be taking a tour of the Terra Lake Facility on there, so, uh, they're, they're getting Also be taking a tour of the Terra Lake facility on there, so they're, they're getting well-rounded representation of Kodiak. So anyway, that's all I got at, at this time here, so we'll, we'll... Oh, Lena?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, real quick, if I can add, I, I forgot to mention that the candidacy period does open on August 1st, so those packets are available on the website or at the clerk's office if anyone is interested. Get the word out, so we have a couple seats that are opening, so...
Thank you. Appreciate it. With that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the work session. Thank you all for showing up tonight.